Yes.
Okay, well, like I say, um, sounds like people are settling in and I think we should go ahead and get started with the agenda. So I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:07 PM. Let's uh, so I did that. So let's have a roll call of council members to establish a quorum. So let's start with Laura.
Laura Swanson here.
Thank you. Amber?
Amber here.
Thank you. Chelsea?
Present.
Laurel?
Present.
And anybody else here? Okay, and then Monica McDaniel's present. I don't see Vicky here yet. Is that correct? Where's Vicky? Where's Vicky?
I'm online. I'm here. I'm not online.
Can you see her?
Oh, okay. Hi, Vicky. All right, so. Okay, so she's, has she a star? Okay, so Vicky just say like, hi, I'm Vicky and I'm here.
Hi, Vicky, why not? I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, does anybody want to volunteer?
Tricia's also here.
Oh, thank you, and Tricia. Okay, how do I not see these people?
Because she's not yet online.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then Tricia, let's say, Tricia, Tricia's here. Okay, I barely heard that, but I got the wave and the acknowledgement. Okay, I think that's, I think that's official. A thumbs up on those people. Okay. Great. Thank you, guys. Um, would anyone like, Laura, would you like to read the school verse? It's right on the agenda.
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school.
Thank you so much. Are there any agenda modifications requested this evening? Okay, considering I can't see a couple of the board members yet, I'm just gonna look to Chelsea, because I can kind of see her in the corner of my screen. And for consensus, checking for consensus. So she's nodding her head now that-
One here has modifications.
Okay, thank you. And hearing none, then we're gonna move on. Um, is there any audience to address the council? Um, Alicia Trider, um, and it looks like she's the only person with her hand up. Alicia?
Yes, hi, thank you. Sorry, I was just trying to lower my hand.
Sure.
Yes, hi, my name is Alicia Trider. I'm a parent of a first grader here at Blue Oak. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh, I just want to say it's been really cool to see Blue Oak's increased visibility in support of diversity. Specifically recently on social media where you've been sharing books that celebrate diversity. I just want to say, go you. It's very cool to see. And I'm here because I would love to know, um, how else Blue Oak is addressing diversity and diversity issues, um, at all levels. So I'm just wondering, you know, at the charter council level here, at the policy level, at the director level, faculty and staff level, parent council, classrooms and curriculum. Just wondering what else is happening behind the scenes. Um, I would also love to hear a report, um, about diversity and equity and anti-racism, because I know we have that task force here at Blue Oak. And it would be really informative if they could speak or somebody could speak to what's happening on that task force, just like we hear from the finance committee and the parent council. Um, just because I haven't heard mention of them since the fall, and I'm interested to hear how they're supporting Blue Oak's commitment to diversity, uh, anti-racism and equity. I would also, I just have a suggestion, um, things that I've seen other entities use in their commitment to diversity, and that's just to start using a land acknowledgement, at the beginning of meetings, to recognize and honor the original inhabitants of the land, the Machu Picchu. Um, and here I want to thank the Office of Tribal Relations at Chico State, because they inspire this land acknowledgement for Blue Oak. Quote, uh, and this is just an idea of something you could use if you wanted to moving forward. We acknowledge and are mindful that Blue Oak stands on lands that were originally occupied by the first people of this area, the Machu Picchu. And we recognize their distinctive spiritual relationship with this land and the waters that run through our city. We are humbled that our school resides upon sacred lands that once sustained the Machu Picchu people for centuries. And I'm happy to provide you with the text for this land acknowledgement. Um, thank you again for this time to speak to the council, and I look forward to hearing more about, um, what's happening in terms of, uh, diversity work at Blue Oak. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that lovely land acknowledgement. That was really well, well composed. Thank you. Um, Susan, you have your hand up too?
I do. I have a sad but important note to make. I wanted to acknowledge, you will see later on, on your, I'm reverting. So, you will see later on, under consent agenda, uh, the noted resignations of the fortato. Chris and Jim have been an important part of Blue Oak's school for many, many years, and have done a lot to support and strengthen this community. They have made the decision to move closer to more family back, and so will be leaving us at the end of the month. And so I wanted to take a moment, um, praising and say thank you to them at the board level and allow you all to share in this message. Jim and Davis, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. It's been an honor being here. Yeah, so that, it's meant as much to us. I think it's worked the opposite way. We've enjoyed being here more than you guys have enjoyed having us here.
Wait, is Chris there?
Yeah.
I need to see her, where she's talking. Hi. Hi, virtual hugs on you.
Hey, thank you.
Hi.
Hey, I've been working with your kids and knowing what you've been doing. Thank you. Thank you.
We love you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chris and Jim. You guys are awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the acknowledgement, and it's been great.
Yeah, I have a quick question. If I don't accept your resignation, does that mean that you'll, um, stay?
No.
Just kidding, I know better.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys. And Susan, thank you for mentioning that. So, um, I'm hearing, like you say, the logistics thing. Should we work that out before we move on to the next thing?
Monica, I think it looks like not everybody who is in person is muted right now, and I think maybe if, um-
Oh, so if everybody could please mute, I think that's gonna be huge.
It looks like Vicky might still be unmuted.
Vicky, my dear, could you please mute? Thank you.
I think it is, if someone wants to test it. Oh, it is.
It's like a really bad rock concert.
Okay, is everyone on?
Yeah, I think everyone's on mute now. So now I don't hear anything. I'm just talking, so I'm thinking people hear me. Okay. So, all right, all right, cool. So, are, is there any other audience to address the council? I see no other hands up. Susan, your hand is still up. I was gonna, I don't know if I can take it. You have to take your own hand down. Thank you for mentioning that about, um, Chris and Jim. I just want everyone to know that when, uh, Jim first started before Chris joined, um, we had town halls and, and different things, and Jim was involved. And I just think of Chris and Jim as family. Um, they're not janitors or school nurses or people like that. They're like family, and so, um, I'm glad I could be here tonight to facilitate this for them. Okay, that's enough. Um, let's move on to item two and, uh, just, and for the consent agenda. So, um, are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to, to take out and discuss? Any questions, any concerns? Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
This is Chelsea. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a first. I will actually call the second on the consent agenda, which is not normal, but I would like to do it for this one, please. So we have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion about items on the consent agenda? Okay, let's have a roll call vote. I will call on, uh, members to accept item two point, uh, two point, one through two point five, uh, for the consent agenda. Laura?
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, Amber?
Hi.
Thank you. Chelsea?
Hi.
Thank you. Vicky?
If you want to call, aye.
All right, thank you. Um, Laurel?
Laurel says yes.
Okay, thank you, Laurel. And I know that Tricia is, is there.
Yeah, aye. I, I said aye.
Thank you. And Monica McDaniel, aye. Okay, all items on the consent agenda pass, and we will miss the fortatos, and we wish you all the very best. Um, so moving on to governance, item three point one, finance committee report. Chelsea Parker?
I'm sorry, we're trying to do a little bit of a question.
I'm gonna mute myself, so I don't contribute to the feedback.
Last thing I'm doing was the joint meeting, so everybody was there. Uh, prior to that, um, we just, I have a good report. It looks like, um, currently in our forecast, we have no expected borrowing necessary, and going to summer based, based on our current position. Um, so we're hopeful that, that no, no bumps will pop up that will change that. And we did approve, um, new certificated and classified salary schedules to be presented, not approved, but we recommended them to be presented to the board. And that, that's it. Monica, you're on mute.
Thank you. I got a new monitor and everything is wonky here. I asked if there were any questions? And I didn't hear any, but now I hear that you didn't hear me, and now, okay, so then we're moving on. Item three point two, parent council report. Tricia?
Yes, um, I wasn't there this month. Two vacations and both fellow council. So looking at the, um, Amber was probably there, maybe?
Okay.
So I did read through their, um, Amanda's notes. So I know they've been talking about the Mayfair a lot and getting that all set up, so I think that was most of the meeting. Also talking about student store, and so, and everybody's super excited for the meeting, so.
Okay, and what is the Mayfair? What are the highlights? And do we want to sell to come?
Yeah, I don't know all of the highlights of the details. I don't know if anybody else does.
Probably gonna be a maple and some food.
Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah.
Stuff for sale.
Yeah.
Flowers, probably flowers.
You don't need that.
Right?
You can hear me. Um, so a little bit about the Mayfair, um, it's gonna be May 1st. It's a drive around 11 to 12. We are planning some music. We're planning a maple dance by the eighth graders, um, and a few other things. Nick is, uh, really sort of heading this up. So, and Riley and Gannon may have a little more to tell you, but that's saving May 1st, 11 to 12. That's a priority I want you to hear tonight. Thank you.
Yep, that May 1st, that May 4th, 11 to 12 is what I really wanted to hear. Okay, 11, I'm sorry, 11 to what?
11 to 12, one hour.
Okay, was what I really wanted to hear. Riley, did you want to add anything?
I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay, thank you, dear.
An excitement to come.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Um, thanks, Chelsea. Thanks, Tricia. Policy review, Susan Demina-Ginney. First, we have three.
Policies, both your second read, you saw them last month, and coming up again for the final read and approval, um, if board desires.
Okay, has everybody read over that? As I've, everyone, people want a second to review that now. I'm gonna give you a few minutes to kind of look it over and, um, monitor the questions and, if people have them. Thanks, Alexandra, for bringing it up.
Monica, this is Chelsea. I'd like to make a motion to approve 3.3.1 and 3.3.2, the technology and instruction policy and the board government standards.
Thanks, Chelsea. Thanks for including both of those in that. Um, so we have a motion to accept boy, both the policies that had to do with technology and board governance standards. Do I, I have a first, is there a second?
Laurel's second.
Ooh, they're gonna duke it out. Who went? Okay, Laurel, you got the floor, I think. Okay, Laura Swanson, Laura Swanson, okay. Laura Swanson, there's her second. Is there any further discussion about either of these two policies, um, and their second read before we, um, adopt them? I don't know where all the hands went, so I'm gonna rely on, and someone telling me there's a hand up. I don't see any hands up. Thanks, Rachel. I'm gonna watch you, so I can see you. Okay.
Susan still has her hand up from the very beginning, but.
But we know she would be, yeah, okay, thanks, thanks. Okay, we have a first and a second, no further discussion. Um, uh, I'm not seeing, Rachel, there's no further questions or anything. Okay. Um, thank you. So then we'll have a vote. Um, let me make my screen bigger so I can find everybody. All right, here we go. Uh, Vicky?
Vicky, 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 why, aye, aye.
Thank you. Laura?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Thank you. Tricia?
The signs were after the timer, okay. You just can't do it before.
Thank, thank you. Chelsea?
Aye.
Okay, and Monica McDaniel, aye. Okay, so those two-
Laurel, Laurel Hill Ward, aye.
Laurel, thank you, dear. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so those two policies pass, um, pass into, um, to our new, uh, standards, new policy. Uh, item 3.3, MOU from BCOE. Chelsea?
Yeah, I can, I don't have it in front of me. Um, but it's just, it's the extension of our MOU with BCOE, um, to standard. And it's the, it just covers this school year. So they, they support us with our, um, cowpads recording, with our theories, with, uh, what's that? Yeah, yeah, technology. Uh, I might turn, or am I missing any of the big ones? So, a pretty, pretty substantial amount of support. Uh, so this just continues that. It's been going very well. Um, and, um, at the finance committee level, we reviewed it. Um, it is, um, on par with where we've been and substantially better than we'd be if we were to go out independently. We do recommend the renewal of this MOU.
Thank you, Chelsea, and, um, thanks for bringing it up balance, because, because there's a lot of different things on that. Um, and this is kind of huge. I didn't realize that. I, I guess I didn't realize these details. I knew that they were supporting us. Um, so I'm in favor of this. Um, is there any other discussion around this? The finance committee recommends that we do accept this MOU?
Yes.
Okay, um, do I hear a motion to accept the MOU?
This is Tricia. Um, I'll make a motion to accept the MOU.
Thanks, Tricia. I have, thank you, Tricia. I have a first, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so Tricia and Chelsea?
Okay, Vicky.
I'm sorry, Vicky.
Okay.
Especially with the masks on, I can't tell who's talking. Okay, so.
I have one comment that I would like to ask for potentially a, a denim, because I'm looking at this, or an adjustment. They have, we have put, uh, the con app management submission as a 10% of our funds. That's actually covered for us by charter impact. Um, so, uh, last year and so on, I've talked to Barbara, and it's been taken back up, but I think it might be important to make a note of that at this board meeting.
Totally agree.
Covering that particular item.
Okay, so, um, Tricia, you made the original, Tricia, you made the original motion. Would you mind amending your motion to, um, considering, uh, amending the con app line item?
Yeah, so I'll amend the original motion to, um, um, removing it. So we're gonna remove this service? Or, yeah, remove the con app management submission.
Remove the con, uh, yeah, management, uh, commission. Thank you. And Vicky, you're in support of that?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a first and we have a second. Um, Susan gave us an amendment. Is there any further discussion about the MOU with BCOE? Okay, um, Susan, do I have to abstain from this vote since I work for BCOE?
No, because you don't get any profit.
Wouldn't benefit me in any way. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you. So I'll call for a vote if I hear, hearing no further discussion. Um, Laura?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Tricia?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Monica McDaniel, aye. Uh, since Tricia and Chelsea are sitting close together, Chelsea's name appears for me under Tricia's face, and now I'm thoroughly confused. But you know what? We'll figure it out.
Monica, she was having connectivity issues, so we're just sharing one screen.
Tot, yeah, totally get it. It's just my own, it's just funny. Um, okay. Sure thing. Thank, thank you. Um, so item 3.4 passes. I didn't forget anybody, right? Okay, fantastic. Item 3.5, paid advertising and social media proposal from MC Squared.
Yeah, so this is, um, another item. We have been working with MC Squared, as, as you may recall, and to do some of our marketing and website, and, and have previously approved an agreement with them. This is an extension of that agreement to include some additional, um, some additional advertising support, um, in areas such as, um, bringing, like, Google search. So when you search for charter schools in Chico, um, our website would float to the top instead of some previous articles. Um, it'll really work to direct traffic where we want it to go. As well as creating social media, um, posts, and then we would post them, but they would create, like, the calendar to schedule that, as well as helping to create those posts. But then, um, Alex would then execute the posting of, um, those are the big things. So, um, that would be, it's for an additional $17,861. And so, uh, the finance committee has reviewed this. We do believe that the value in this is substantial, and, um, and I believe it's what, two, two students. If we, in, in utilizing this, we expect additional, um, positive traffic to our, um, site, then resulting in increased enrollment. And it would only take, uh, about two students, an increase of two students to cover this cost, and we feel like, um, it is absolutely worthwhile. And we voted to support it. So we'd asked that the charter council, oh, yeah.
So, or, this is all over six months. Like, I see the social media is six months campaign, so are they doing the Google ads and all of that, if that works?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then they will leave us with a plan, and.
Yeah.
You know, and this is how we move forward. And the ads then, so is that, I, that's just a thousand dollars over those. It says three of those, that's 3,000 over six months, I guess.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm wondering if, at, at some points along the way, you can evaluate, uh, as Chelsea mentioned, two students would defray the cost of this, but as you enroll any new students, will you have a process in place to ask them if they were brought to you through this process? In other words, i- is there a way to evaluate if any enrollment you pick up, uh, was because of the influence of this, um, consultant and consultant's fee?
Yes, that's a good reminder. We do always ask where someone heard some about us, you know, and where they've come, but I think we'll make sure and add, did you hear, did you see us on the Google search? So that it-
I think that'd be a good idea, I think, to try to really formally, because probably a lot of other schools are hiring consultants to do the same. So it'll be interesting to see how much value added there actually is.
Yeah, and, and it directly helps us point to being able to pay for itself if we are able to attribute to students from, um, from this, this advertising. So I totally agree. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay, um, and I imagine we need to, um, we need to approve this?
Yes.
So I'm gonna call the question and, um, ask if I can hear a motion to accept item, um, 3.5 for paid advertising and social media proposal from MC Squared.
This is Chelsea. I propose, or I move to, um, accept the social media and advertising proposal from MC Squared as presented.
Thanks, Chelsea. I have a first, is there a second?
This is Amber Brown. I'll second.
Great, thanks, Amber. So any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I will have a, I will call member, uh, charter council members for a vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Thank you. Laura?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Chelsea?
Aye.
And then Tricia?
Aye.
Okay, and then Vicky?
Aye.
And Amber?
Aye.
Thank you. And Monica McDaniel, aye. Okay, I think this is a big step. I think this is sort of historical, and, um, I'm really looking forward to seeing what comes out of this, and I'm hoping we get way more than just two students, so. Thanks for everybody for, for participating and all the people who participated in getting MC Squared the information to create this ad campaign, because it was a lot of work. And they've, they've been really great. Um, okay, so moving on to item 3.6, salary schedules.
So, the, um, the finance committee has been working on this, um, mostly with Susan and her team's efforts, um, into it. We've reviewed it and discussed it, and, um, what we recommend for approval is, um, this is this year. Oh, this is the correct, okay. The one that they, um. Option C. Yeah, yeah, okay, perfect. So, um, we, this is the, uh, the salary schedule that the finance committee recommends. And it's a 3% annual increase over first steps, and then in the columns, it's also an additional 3% from one column to the next. Um, you may notice that we went from a 5% annual increase to a 3%, but that has to do with the drastic increase, um, in the starting salary scale, so by increasing- So by increasing that by 5%, we were, over a couple of years, well over our highest step now and well over what is even reasonable for an administrator to make. So this, reducing it to a 3% annual increase, but by increasing where we start, it still needs for a very competitive salary scale. And so this is, this is the one we recommend for our certificated staff. And we also have, we also made the adjustment to the classified salary schedule. Also for the minimum wage increase. And then in addition to increasing the salary scale to, there are the classified salary schedule to adjust for the minimum wage increase, we also added a paraprofessional to one of the steps there. And that's a position that we don't currently have at Blue Oak, but the intention is there to add it. So we added it. You can see a step or range four is where that paraprofessional would start. And a paraprofessional would have additional training above what an instructional aid would have. So that's why they're placed there on the salary schedule.
This is really great and I feel like it's a culmination of so much hard work. And Chelsea, my favorite thing I heard you say was competitive pay scale. Because we want to keep our talent and we want to keep our Waldorf educated teachers. We don't want them going to other schools and doing Waldorf practices somewhere else. So I just, you know, I just can't thank you enough for all your hard work that you do for this board and for the school. Not just at this, the charter council meeting here, but all of the other finance committee work that is so multifaceted. And so I really just need to acknowledge that. Are there any questions about the proposed salary schedules?
Laura, I saw your hand pop up real quick. Did you have a question?
I did, and I'm just curious if that's, it's more just curiosity. Is that kind of standard practice to lower the yearly amount that your pay is increased when the minimum wage goes up?
So Susan, you might feel better than me. I think what typically happens is just an overall review of the salary scale in general to determine what, what the budget can bear. And so by doing a percent increase, it does make it easier for us to just make any adjustments across the scale. But by having such a steep increase to the bottom, what some schools do is they, the increases stop after a period of time. So you stop getting such a substantial increase or it drastically reduces or you start skipping years. And for us, we did feel like it was important to, to honor our higher, I wouldn't say tenure, but they're not tenure, but our longer term teachers by continuing those increases versus saying, okay, well, this is, we can't afford to keep increasing you after you're at eight or 10 years. So then you kind of either slow way down or start to stagnate. And that, in order to do that, we did need to look at our, our increases more closely and be more aligned with reasonable. So that's.
And just to add, because I sat in on that meeting and I know that they, the teachers that were there found a lot of value in making sure that they were getting increases every year. So I kind of just asked what you were saying. They won't take away, they're a little bit less, but they're there to skip them every year.
And with, with this new salary schedule, we did one of the really big things that we looked at to ensure as we reduce the percentage step over step and to ensure that everyone would see an increase. So there is nobody that's even staying the same. Everybody, because the, the bottom of the salary scale is so much higher, everyone will see a pretty generous annual increase regardless of where they're at on the pay scale. So our second year teachers or eighth year teachers or 12th year teachers, nobody will even be staying the same. And I believe the lowest jump that I saw and was like $8,000 a year or more and that our, that our teachers will see switching to this new scale from where they currently are. So, so yeah, over, over what they would have seen. So it was, we did ensure that, that we weren't putting any teachers in a situation where adjusting to the new scale keeps them the same or decreases them or anything like that. But because the bottom tiers are so much higher, then everybody will, will recognize that increase immediately.
Thank you so much, Chelsea. I just didn't know how that works. I appreciate your answer.
I'm glad to have the question.
Me too. I was gonna say, it was a good question and it was a great explanation too. So.
Laura, to say what standard practices, I think Chelsea expressed it a little bit. There really isn't. There's so many different ways of putting a pay scale together. What's unprecedented right now is the expected increase of the base salary schedule over the past three years. We've never seen that. So, so it's just a big increase period as required by law. So we're happy to be able to do that and to be able to support the teachers. And as Amber said, this was actually the salary schedule that was suggested by the faculty that were there. This was there, the one they felt was most appropriate.
I have two question, well, one comment is, as you mentioned, Susan, my understanding is that this was triggered by a change in the minimum way, wage. To go back to Laura's question, there has to be a particular gap in order for it to be fair between the minimum wage and what the lowest paid employee is getting. The other thing too, I'm just curious, what percentage of the total budget now is in wages? And I want to say I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. The question is not related to any disagreement with it. But what percentage now is spent on staffing, staffing of the total budget? And if you don't have an answer, don't worry. I just be curious to know later.
Yeah, it's a very valid question and something Jim and I have been talking about and will be part of our budget planning for next year. So you know, right now today, we don't have those numbers for you.
Thank you. Thank you all and Chelsea. Thanks for a great job and nice to know that this is just a way to show value and respect for the teachers. So nice to see it happen.
And it seems like this is one huge piece of overall reform from the former administration too. So that makes me especially happy. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. Do I hear a motion to accept the, the salary schedules or have we already done that?
There's not yet.
I move, I move to accept the salary schedule. This is Laurel.
Thank you, Laurel.
I was just going to ask for a point of clarification on the motion because there are two salary schedules presented for, that are recommended for approval and it's both a certificated and the classified.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to accept both the certificated and classified salary schedules as revised.
Thank you. Thank you for the amendment and for pointing that out. So we have a first to accept both salary schedules. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Vicky. Thanks, Vicky. I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll have a vote. Laurel?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Amber?
Aye.
And Monica, aye. Okay, guys, great work. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, faculty and staff. Okay, moving on to item 3.7, COVID-19 update.
Okay, this is part of your annual or monthly ask to say how we're doing on, on the COVID response. And I did, I was able to put a report together and writing for you also today. So we continue to have no occurrences on campus. Much as would be expected with the numbers going down in the community. We have also seen that reflection here with no, nothing for the last month reported either by staff or families. So we're really appreciative of that and hoping that that will continue, believing that it will. We continue to work to focus on hand washing, mask wearing and social distancing. It is getting much harder as the spring comes along and kids spend more time in classes together to keep them apart from each other. But they stick pretty well to their group. So overall, I think we're doing all right. And again, I think the proof is in the pudding that we're not seeing any additional, any additional spreading. So, and as they've told us, it's really the adults who have the issue and our adults are doing a good job. So can you put my.
Yeah, sorry. I'm grabbing that right now.
I also noticed that Blue Oak is on the self-screening app that employees with BCOE and other local schools are using. So that is an increased level of reporting also, because each employee has to check in on the app and report before they report to work.
We are still taking purportures every morning of all students and, and staff members. It's been a while since we've even had a high temperature. So, you know, it's just a healthy community, just thinking long-term and parts of, in, in case of dealing with flu epidemics as well. It's like, hmm, we're not getting the flu. Hmm. So there's that. We did that, we did go ahead and purchase air purifiers. We had planned on that as we were bringing all kids back on campus. And even though we haven't needed it, it feels like, you know, in the case where there might be a case that having a better air purification system, again, long-term, we have flu come around, we can purify the air. And so we're all learning new things.
And I feel like the air purifiers will also benefit everyone's talents. Yes, so I would say any immigrant population from those who suffer from the flu or.
Yeah, so we're feeling pretty good about that. We did talk last time about whether or not to consider further reopening the school with the possibility of adding Fridays for the full days. And so I wrote out for you the conversation and the pros and cons, discussion that we had with the reopening team. Reopening team represents all aspects of the faculty and staff, including teachers, aides, classified support staff of facilities, faculty and specialties. So they were all there represented and we talked for quite a while. They considered it. The big thing that's going on that right now is state testing. State testing started at the beginning of last week. And going through the state testing process, it's a time where you want to really be able to focus on our kids eating well or they rested or they set up to test, you know. And with all the issues around devices and we're testing at home and testing here, it felt like a lot to try and make a major change in the school before that. We are continuing to see students more and more returning to campus, but they also flip sometimes and go home as well. So the teachers are still doing both hybrid and, and distance learning. So there's a lot of flow and adjustment they're dealing with on a weekly basis. And that would not change if we added more days to campus. That flexibility is also helping with the social emotional issues students have. Coming back to campus is helpful and positive for most of us, most of them, most of us, but most of them. The students and the students that are struggling are mostly coming back to campus and, and being here four days a week. And that seems to be really supportive. Then sometimes they need to go home for a while too. And so that moving back and forth is happening on a fairly regular basis. And so that it requires a lot of flexibility on the side of teachers. We haven't figured out a way for the special, specialty teachers to work with the classrooms and any other way from distance. So because they would have to move around to all the classrooms, it just hasn't been something that we have been able to do. And if, if students were on-site longer, we would need to be able to do that. So we haven't been able to do that. There's a short time left in the year. So the feeling of the faculty is really that doing a major move like increasing our days would actually reduce the actual time that could spend on instructing because of just the processes that go along with those changes. Can you scroll it down a little bit more since the bottom? We're now really focusing a lot on our summer school learning loss plans, returning to fall on-site and fall and how those, that work is going to happen. So that's a big prayer in the school as well. And I know that there's a real desire for students to be on campus more. But there's also just so many intricacies with this particular instructional style and the needs of the families that are still in distance learning, which is 25 to 30% of our students. And then that need of teachers to split their workload between those that are home and those that are in school. And we really don't have a way of changing that so that we can have like one teacher take, we tried that, let me tell you. To have one teacher take the students that are home, that sort of thing. Because one of the things that's really helpful to the social emotional issues is that regular connection when they're classed even if they're. So the reopening team really does not recommend that we further open. For that, they, they are recommending that we continue with our current plan, allowing more students to come on campus at least four days a week and through the remedial of the year and then go to full reopening in the fall. Then I go over what summer programs we're looking at, a summer school program. It's really hard to say two, two when I'm writing, it's too hard. So we're having, we're looking at four weeks with two, two-week sessions between July and August. And then really inviting back those students that are in need of remediation that we've seen with learning loss. So we're at the point, we have surveyed staff to see if we would like to come back and help during that period of time. Of course, there'll be an extra paycheck for that. And then we're also looking at what our student needs are at this point too. Then Emma Todd has got a plan for basically six weeks of group sessions by grade level. So different grade levels for two, three days, one day a week for six weeks. So that she can also continue to work with the kids that are, are struggling emotionally. You know that that's going to be something we'll be working on for a while. And with the history of Blue Oak and with the area, the campfire and, and then COVID, it is a lot for children to deal with. So we are still working on that and is doing amazing work and has awesome plans for the fall. So I look forward to being able to share that with you. And then our fall reopening, we are moving forward the plan for full-on-site program, our normal program in the fall. We are looking at a small percentage of families who have requested to continue distance learning. So we're looking at shifting that to an independent study option. So rather than being connected with a classroom, they would have an independent study teacher and how we can do that. So rather than being connected with a classroom, they would have an independent study teacher and how we can do that. And if of course things change and this is not something we can do with reopening, then we will return to the current hybrid plan with the exception when they look at additional pay, additional funding if necessary, or back to the full business. While we're really not thinking that's going to happen, but you have that. If then, what plan in place?
Really, yeah. Okay. So does anybody have questions or comments about the COVID update and the possible, yeah, and about the COVID update and the plans that are coming up in the next few months? As we end up this school year, go through summer school, I'm really excited to hear about the summer school program and then to fall.
Amber has some questions.
So.
Okay.
Have you guys thought about the option of specific teachers wanting to go back to Fridays? And I would say that because I'm just thinking of the three kids I have and the differences that go on their Fridays. And some of them I could kind of see that where it would be challenging, but some of them I see where they're spending the entire day online, you know, with the, doing the same things they're doing in class. So I know she can unify which the teachers asked them if they wanted to do it, if they could coordinate it with their class. Were all parents agreed? They gave teachers that option? Did you guys talk about that at all, possibly giving the option of a class by class basis?
We didn't go class by class basis. It's part of the process for the representatives on the reopening team. So we didn't, as admin, we didn't go and ask them.
Okay.
But they're given to the plan that team.
Do you think something like that would be an option to talk about by teacher? Or is that logistically an issue with the way that would work if they were willing to run it? Because that's basically how they're doing achieving by if the teacher's willing to own it the full day, they're able to work the full day, they run their own breaks, they run their own pickup schedule and all the parents and teachers have an agreed upon schedule that they do.
I don't know how that would work. I would really have to go back to the team and ask how that would work with a school setup like ours. I would kind of lean towards that working, Amber, but I don't really have an answer for you because I haven't asked the question.
And then what about like the specialty teachers zooming in? Like doing that, zooming into the class they're already in and extending hours possibly. And I'm not even thinking of this for fall if we have to, but I think that that is a challenge. Like I see the specialties. And again, I have points on my own three kids, but there's not a lot of show up for them. So there's not a lot of participation and consistently. So I do feel like those kids are kind of missing out. And I, and I get it. It's hard. Like one of mine is like right after school. So we're trying to do lunch and then we're trying to do Zoom at the same time. And it's a challenge. On top of the projects that you have to do, the skill set for those sometimes is challenging. So have they thought about that, whether they can zoom into the classroom and work to that?
We have talked about it. I'll tell you that I had about a five page report from special teachers. And so I would have to go back to what they've said, but they really did think this through pretty carefully before they suggested that this would be better to continue working the way they're working.
Because I will just say, long term, I think that it's challenging. It's challenging at home for the pickup, the drop off of the materials, to the skill set, the parent time with it. The specialties are quite taxing on the parents at home. And if you're the parent that wants to do it all. I have my second grader, sometimes it's there until four o'clock in the afternoon between everything that he needs to get done, which is a lot for a second grader. So and then Thursday, same thing, my sixth grader has a couple of days where she's there pretty all day. Because, you know, I appreciate the fact that the teachers are including everything, but they're at home doing a lot still. So I just kind of want to express that as being a challenge that I think is going to be here long term if we feel like that. And then my last thing was for the summer school program, are that, is that going to be recommended for certain kids? Or are we going to be asking parents, are you interested in that?
We're looking first at the children who really most need it and have not been successful in this year to bring them up to our, the rest of their class. Those are main groups.
And then you need to fill spots when you guys reach out to parents, you think, or are you going to just really focus on those kids that are?
We'd really rather keep focused. So if it's a smaller group, because it really needs us.
Okay.
I had a question, speaking of your kids who are seeing substantial learning loss and struggles from. Has any consideration been made to do, I know Chuprey unified, my student was such a unified was struggling in one of his subject areas. And so they are doing tutoring for, just for those specific students. And it's with his classroom teacher. So the coverts remain in the back. And it's forty five minutes at the end of their school day. So has any consideration been given to that? And it's my understanding that Chuprey, like teachers are receiving an additional stipend for that, for that additional work that's being asked of them. But just, just for the students that are either struggling at home or just need that extra help or whose parents aren't available to help them. So they're struggling at home because of that. And I think it's pretty easy to identify, like you said, those same students that we'd be recommending to come to a summer program offering some additional time during the current school week.
So we are teaching from the beginning of established office hours, which are precisely for that purpose. So that they have extra time to work with those students.
That's all on Zoom.
That is all on Zoom, yeah. So you're saying something on.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, in person. I'm just thinking if we've got students who aren't successful currently with the distance learning portion of our hybrid model, then having them come in during distance learning office hours may not be addressing the need for actually receiving that education and receiving learning loss and students struggling with this model.
And I think where it's beneficial is it's directly after school. So they're not going back home. They're not, you know, they stay with their same teacher directly after school for extra forty five minutes. And they've been running like four week reading programs, four week math programs. Because I just worry with summer that parents are, we're going to have low participation rates because parents are, and they, you know, I mean, I want them to have their time off, especially after this year in the summer. So I think that's, and they, they voice those concerns too. That's why I was asking about surveys and if you have parents already on board. So I'd hate to put that much time into it and then not get the participation. But this is beneficial because it's right after school. It gives parents a little break because they have a little extra time to pick them up. But it also gives them that one on one time with their same teacher and the same environment. So, yeah, I have one of my little ones that is in that same program. It's been really beneficial.
We have a few examples of that going on already. As it's worked out between the teacher and the students and what whether or not it is something they'll hopefully engage in. So, yeah, we do have that going on. Or primarily for students that are already onsite though. Bringing students onsite. If they're, or if they're, the reason the family is onsite is because of health concerns, bringing them onsite later, they're not good. So all of that logistics, but we are doing that where we can sign in.
I have a comment. Yeah, one of the things to, you know, this notion that kids are behind. It's, it's certainly, I can see, I mean, it only makes sense that, that there has been learning loss. But one of the things I think too is to try to put a positive spin on it. You know, everybody's been through a lot of trauma and just a really difficult time. And so something might go out to the parents suggesting that maybe even suggesting particular movies that have accurate historical content. Or I'm thinking like with my granddaughters, you know, we watch something about a particular artist or books they can read, you know, ways that, that rather than look at it like, oh, this is really awful and our kids are behind. And especially kind of, especially kind of projecting that onto them. It's, it's kind of a reopening and a rebirth and, and getting families involved in thinking of other ways of learning and positive ways of learning. And I'll give you an example. I have a granddaughter who really, really struggles with math. And she's demonstrated a lot of strengths in fractions. This is kind of surprising, but it's because she's been able this year to do a lot of cooking. And so, you know, you're very capable and very bright teachers could put together a list of activities, both ones that kids can do independently and then as a family that would help recover some of that so-called learning loss. Thank you.
I think it'll be an interesting, and thank you, Laurel. It's a really good suggestion. I think it'll be an interesting conversation as we return. Some of the surveys that I have seen and looked at talk about the fact that families are worried about learning loss, but they're really happy with their child's education. So how much of the real learning loss is actual learning loss? And how much is it the media presentation of learning loss? And I think that's sort of what you're talking about, Laurel, with what your grandchildren are going through. So.
Yeah, it's, it's. Yeah, I think it's.
There's more of a perception of learning loss than that. That's why we really want to look at the individual child, how, how much they've attended.
Right.
Work they've produced. Are they showing that they're making the progress and really focus on those children? There may be another forty percent of the students that parents think that their children are not doing well, who in fact are doing pretty well. Because learning is different in this situation, but it hasn't completely gone.
And also people have learned a lot of resilience. I know I'm sure in, for many of you, you know, we're, we're getting through this. We're surviving. We've, we've experienced some loss, some of us and people we've known. But, but I just think there, it's difficult to perceive it as an upside. But, you know, certainly kids don't need any more perception that it's a downside, you know. And, and so anyway, just, just thinking maybe the teachers could help families come up with some ways where learning could be integrated into the summer with some fun and joy.
And yes, and we will, we will work on that most definitely.
Yeah, and I love that, Laurel, and I love that perspective. And for me personally, my thoughts on it is not a concern over the overall learning loss as a whole for the student body. And I use the air quotes on that because I think, you know, they're behind compared to what is what I always ask, like compared to what? Our kids are going to be behind compared to what? Compared to the rest of the country that's all also facing the same challenges? And so they're really not as a whole. And my concern is more for the students who are typically at an economic disadvantage that have, that don't have the adult support at home. And because they're working families that aren't available for that. Those who have parents who just aren't engaged at the same level, who are, would be the same parents who then aren't taking those activities that they're being given and, and working on those at home. So those are really the students that I'm concerned about is the students who in a good school year already are disadvantaged and struggling because of the less support at home. And I, I, from a lot of the stuff that I've been reading in our country with the, the learning loss, it being noticeable and of a higher impact to those who are already economically disadvantaged in a very disproportionate way. And that's my concern is that when you look at the grand scheme of things, it makes it a lot harder to come out of a situation like that when, when the gap keeps getting bigger. So as the years go through, you know, those who are already disadvantaged, we're seeing a higher percentage. So those are really the students I'm concerned about.
I agree. That was my point of bringing up because Laurel, I agree with you. I mean, there's been a lot of silver linings for our family and we've learned a lot of different things. And, you know, some of my kids actually did really well online. So I'm with Chelsea. I'm more wondering and making sure that we're using these funds and this time to target the kids that really need it and that would probably would have needed any.
I think we're, we're all on the same page with this, but just I think it's a time to be really careful. I mean, the populations I worked with mostly were often kids who were, you know, I worked in alternative ed and worked with. And, and they're constantly given that message that they're one down, they're behind, they're not doing as well. So I'm in complete agreement with you about targeting them to try to help. We should. But I, I think to engaging their parents in a better understanding of themselves, just as you go about your daily life, you can enjoy this time and do these things with your students. So I, I do want to say that I don't mean to be a spin doctor on it. But I think we have to be careful about how we make them perceive or how we help them perceive themselves. And so I guess that's my point. It's not, I, I don't deny the learning loss and think we should direct effort toward those kids. But I think we have to be very, very thoughtful about how we do it. Or we're just sending them one more message that they're less than, have less, and they're behind. So, and I know that's nobody in Blue Oak's intention at all. It's just, it's just something to think about.
It's a big discussion, that's all I can say, is definitely.
Yeah. It's a big discussion with a lot of facets to it, you know, and and it's tough because there's a lot of variables at play. But it's good to hear everybody weigh in on all this. So anything else anyone wants to share? Before we move on? Okay, I'm going to move to item three point eight, possible strategic plan meeting date. Item three point eight point one, May fourth, twenty twenty one at four P M. For a proposed strategic planning meeting. I have to say myself, I cannot actually make that. A meeting was planned for me. Two meetings are planned in May that are conflicted with charter council stuff. And this is one of them. I have a meeting that starts right at four o'clock. It's an important annual meeting that I have to do for my job. So I'm not able to make that day or time.
I also am not going to be able to make that. I'll be out of wifi. I'll be on the coast.
Well, okay.
Yeah, no way. We have to be in this county. We're counting over the coast for that.
Are there other proposed possible dates? Or do you want to give us a date, send it back? Or how would you like to handle that?
We can do a beautiful, because I also can't make that time because my husband's not off work yet and I have a kind of, it's a difficult practice.
We will propose some additional days. We really want to, you know, as the finance committee meets the following week and we are looking at L cap budgets and all of those things, we really want to get the strategic plan in as part of that whole planning process. So that's why we're kind of saying early May, please. So that's why we're looking at that.
I can make Thursday or Friday. No weeks.
And for me, I cannot do Friday. I mean, it only gets four. But I could do Thursday and especially if the time is slightly later. The charter council time is a.
I'll ask Alex then to reach out and get a consensus of when the board can come with the other that we played this.
Susan, how, how long do you anticipate this meeting would take? An hour, two hours?
I would say expect it to be two hours.
Two hours. Because I was going to say, for me, the month of May is really tough because my job and with all the stuff that's going on this particular year. For me, I almost prefer a Saturday morning if it's going to be two hours, but that's just me. So, but don't do it by my things. Just, that's just a suggestion.
Today, possible Saturday and see what.
Yeah, see, see what, see what percolates. Yeah. Most important thing is, Alex, do you have some idea of some other dates to propose before we move on? I can't see, I could see.
I think what Susan said is that Alex will put out like maybe a poll via email. I think what Susan said is that Alex will put out like maybe a poll via email.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, if that's easier. I put it on the agenda just to see if there was something easily, you know, that we could all agree on, but yeah, I know. It was just a long shot.
Call my boss next time. Yeah, okay, cool. All right, thank you. Faculty report Riley Mary and Breonna Lee.
Before we do that, can we move quickly to our special meeting agenda?
Oh, yes.
SB 740 grant and then we can, I think Jim is still here. Then he can, so he can help with that and move on if he. Take the rest of the evening. So during the meeting and.
So this is the closed session item, correct?
No, we're talking about the second agenda, which is a special meeting so that we can approve the charter school facility grant.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. That's right, that's right.
Oh, yeah, you need to pause one and then say we're taking a break from the regular.
Okay, so we're taking a break from our regularly scheduled programming to step aside for a special meeting to discuss SB 40, SB 7, or whatever that thing was that we want to talk about with Jim Weber.
And I think that we've done the opening, we can just move right to governance. And I'll ask actually Jim to talk about what he, what we are asking you to approve this evening.
Okay, thank you. So is that, that's up, that's up on the agenda? So we're moving straight to item two and that 2.1 and that's charter school facility grant program, please.
Jim, do you need to use the screen?
No, thank you. Yeah, nothing, nothing unusual here. Actually, all we really need is signatures, but that can be done in the next couple of weeks. This is included in the budget every year. This is just the eligible reimbursement for your rent costs. They opened it a little earlier than usual, mid-April, so it'll be open until mid-May. We just want to make sure we have this approved and signed reimbursement for eligible rent included in the budget every year.
So, and that's why this came up to me Friday and I thought it's such a regular item that I was really worried about the finance committee not saying it first.
And especially because of.
We should have accepted it.
Yes. So for those of you who aren't like real familiar with this, with SB 740, we are eligible to receive a portion of our rent expenses reimbursed. And, and so this is something that we typically always said yes to because who doesn't want more money in a school? So just, just on the simplest of simple terms, we need to vote. So with that, I, Chelsea, will make a motion that we approve the charter school facility grant program agreement and give direction to Susan to sign him forward.
Thanks, Chelsea. We have a first, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Vicky seconded that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'll say thank you because golly, pre-rent is awesome. So thank you for however we did this. Yeah, okay, let's have a vote unless we haven't heard anybody else. Okay, Laurel?
I.
Laura?
Hi.
Vicky?
Hi.
Chelsea?
Hi.
Tricia?
Hi.
Amber?
Hi.
Monica?
Hi.
Alrighty, thank you. Thanks so much, Jim. We really appreciate your help with our school. Okay, are we going back to the old agenda now? We're closing that meeting? Closing, we're closing the special meeting? We're re, re-entering the regularly scheduled meeting where we are on item 4.1, the grade level report.
All right, we have some slides to share.
I got that Riley, if you want.
Okay, you got that.
It's going to take some explanation.
So I thought I would share, this came up a little bit in a recent meeting, some of the weird beauty that is eighth grade. So we'll start with the weird and move to the beauty. So I don't even know quite how this begun, but my eighth grade students have started making a ball out of the foil that is on the muffins that come two days a week in these school lunches. And at some point, that foil ball became Gil, three L's. Gil now has special days of the week. Gil Day are the days that the foil comes out of the school and everybody contributes to Gil. Gil is now about this big. Gil now has a custom sling that he travels in back and forth between certain students on the council of Gil who care for Gil in between times. The sling is also made of recycled lunch products. The Gil sling is some of the plastic bags we used to be using for lunch. There's wild rumors about what's at the inner circle of Gil. I'm not entirely sure. I want to know the answer, but the best rumor is $40,000 hiding in the center of Gil. Yeah, Gil has signs. He gets special spots in class to sit. I had to finally say that he needed to sit in a cubby just to minimize the distraction from Gil. So this is Gil. You'll get a little bit more about why there's a meme of Gil in a second. So a little bit of, of eighth grade in action. Gil goes out to recess, Gil has fan clubs, the whole nine yards. If you were to come by the school on any given day and look over at the eighth graders, and I believe Gil Day is Tuesdays and Thursdays, you'd probably see him hanging out in the play yard with students or in the parking lot. So I do every morning for my morning meeting with the students. I have Google slides that have like the schedule, the verse, announcements for the day. And I've been putting up various memes and comics for the students and mostly getting razzed about them by the eighth graders of how like, I don't know, mom lame or teacher lame, the various memes are that I was picking. So at some point, they started sending me ones to share, which ranged from like, some are legitimately funny, some are just random and silly. Well, then they started making me memes and this is where we get to Gil. So it started with, the first meme made stemmed from, I have always referred to the Tuesday after a three-day weekend as a Tuesday Monday, because it feels like it should be a really easy day because it's been a three-day weekend, but it's always a really hard day. So they started giving me some flack about that and I got this email. Oh, where did it go? Out of the blue, one Sunday evening. No, I didn't know. Sorry, this was the wrong email. I got an urgent email in all caps, one Sunday evening, telling me that they had an absolutely important, sorry, Monday evening, absolutely important meme I must put on the morning meeting that day. And this was the meme, wanting to let me know that the Tuesday, Tuesday, giving Tuesday its true and honest due and not shaming it with this association negatively with Monday. So now this has to go up every Tuesday as, as requested. I did put an asterisk on it that this meme does not necessarily reflect all opinions in the classroom and will continue, of course, to use Tuesday, Monday. But once that happened, we were kind of off and running. I received many very weird Gil memes. This is probably mid-range. One with Gil like on the head of a very muscular sort of human body with fire and flames and things like that. I sometimes share my distaste for box plot. It's a form of graphing mean median mode and range and quartiles. Mr. Combs would be very mad at me, but one of the students in solidarity made me a Gil hates box plots meme. But I challenged them after sharing these in a meeting with some of my coworkers and my administration because they've been asking, well, can't we hang Gil? We're going to hang Gil propaganda all around school. Like how do we, we want to do this? How can we do this? I said, well, you know, you have to submit it to admin and like it has to be approved. You can't just hang it anywhere. So I figured, you know, Susan would go, no way, Jose. And she was like, no, 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 make them, tell them if they make me some school appropriate Gil meme, I'll approve it to get hung around the school. So we're off and running. So that was where the Gil likes hand sanitizing and safety masks. Gil says choose kindness. I'd like to add, Gil has a mask. He wears it in class most days. Gil says wear a mask. Gil says be a hero. Oh, this is my next thing. So this is, this is some of the weird delightfulness that is eighth grade. The Gil memes are going everywhere now. Somebody was showing me one about like Gil making healthy eating choices. Then they stick weird strange things in there because they're eighth graders. But these will be coming to you soon, Susan, for some pending approval of their posting being around the school. Gil continues to grow. He received a whole new host of foil today at snack recess. And their latest request was put to Buck that can they gift Gil to be hidden somewhere in the school when they graduate eighth grade as their secret gift to the school? Can they potentially put Gil somewhere? So this is, this is under, this is under pending approval at this point. So.
I feel like that should really, it should be determined what is actually in the center of Gil before it's around the school, because if it is in fact an old muffin, that could get bad.
I think we're safe because Gil's been in production for quite a while now, but I'll see if I can ferret out the actual answer from them as to what is the center.
Just in case.
Just in case, you never know. They like to talk a big game.
Which boil in.
In reality, like I said, it's probably an eraser or like, I don't know, a cup or something, but.
I'm just, I'm just kidding. I do think that you should put the blue logo on them and then we can get Instagram famous for Gil. Gil, like Gil's story should be on social media as a, a fun to follow.
Oh, no, they're going to be off and running with that.
Yes, Gil around Chico. Yeah, we can do Gil around town memes. I think.
All right, I will tell them this. They were utterly tickled when I told them that there's interest in Gil, you know, school-approved Gil propaganda to be shared. So.
I think, I think the school-approved Gil propaganda should, should make it to our social media.
Please tell your eighth graders that we approve of Gil.
Yes.
Hashtag influence on the community.
Right, hashtag Gil is trending.
Yeah, hashtag Gil says be safe. Yeah, I will pass this on and then they will be very pleased. I'm slightly afraid of the power going to their head that the board has said they approve of Gil and Gil's messaging, but I will definitely pass that on and know that their good work with Gil is moving forward well.
I would challenge them to, Gil has skills. What are they?
Yeah, well, we've used Gil. Gil has distributed, Gil has helped with some science lessons. We talked about like Gil being an example of potential energy because he's not moving. And then when we roll Gil, he's an example of kinetic energy. I think we've talked about how Gil, you know, an object in motion stays in motion, an object at rest stays in rest. If we don't touch Gil, he stays in rest. If we roll Gil, he stays in motion until someone stops him or alters his course. So, you know, Gil has also been helping us study the laws of physics. So, you know, it's been a good day in eighth grade.
I totally love it. And Breonna, I made, I made Shiloh watch, so.
You can share in the weirdness. But I thought I would also, eighth grade is such a fun study in like all that is just salty and weird and ridiculous. They were also discussing the finer points of exactly what would happen if they attempted to overthrow me during math instruction. Rest assured, I, I quelched that attempted poo just fine. But my particular group this year is really incredible artists and it's been giving me a fun challenge to find new ways to, other than Gil propaganda, engage them in art, especially digitally, just trying to use that platform and that tool. So we came across a really cool project, doing self-portraits utilizing Google drawing. So I'll show at the end how they made these, but this was a project of a good couple of art periods. Laura, you might recognize a certain young lady on the right in this one?
Recognize both those people, yeah.
Yes, but it was really neat, you know, I gave them kind of broad parameters, but what they looked like got to really be open to their artistic interpretation. It's really funny how much some of these really look like them. Like this young man here totally captured his expression in his so well. You know, some students went kind of more impressionistic with theirs. Really, really cool project. And it's, it's, it's a tedious one to do well. So this young man on the right has really, really curly hair and he was kind of growing frustrated and trying to figure out how on earth he could capture his hair. But then when he showed me what he had, I agree, you know, we agreed that we thought that the outline version of it was super cool on its own and didn't need any color. Some students took it like more creative and less realistic.
A less realistic one there.
Yeah, it's such a cool project. So let me show you real quick.
Show us, please.
Yeah, they're way more artistic than me. So just a little bit of an idea of you. So you start out with a picture of yourself and then using various little line tools in Google Draw, you have to painstakingly, it's a curve outline, like say your eyebrow. See, I've already messed it up. So you outline your eyebrow, you fill it with color, et cetera, kind of piece by piece by piece, until you eventually end up with outlines that you start then to fill in with color. So you can see how I'm starting to do that on mine. My glasses were probably the hardest thing I did of all. They took me about 15 tries. But yeah, so just an idea of kind of what the project entailed in its beginning. So you know, outline your face and you get like into the various, rather than thinking features, you get into more like the colors and the shadows to create shape, not unlike how you do it when you're actually drawing a face. Wanted to, to share the delightful juxtaposition of beauty and weirdness that is eighth grade.
Thank you.
Hi Shiloh, we miss you.
I still have empty desks.
She ran away. Thank you, Miss Lee. Yeah, yeah, she does. And she loves her class and that was amazing, especially for us. She misses you guys so much. She was able to name all the kids as they came up. It was pretty amazing and they were accurate. So that's awesome. That's so great. Thank you. Okay, item 5.1, administration executive director's report.
Okay. Busy, we've been busy. I shared some favorite moments. So the first one is a very, another very eighth grade story. Teacher's greeting the student. Teacher says, you forgot to mask again. And the student says, did I? And said, well, it's not on your face. Do you have one with you? Oh, no. So very eighth grade kind of a story. We love that. The second story is from one of the sixth grade classes and just how they're really working together around the current situation and working on kindness and virtues and all of that. So that's a beautiful story. Then just again, the other sixth grade class and learning that a pee on us. I thought that was good. And then finally, from one of our younger classes, just a very typical kid. Hey, if you weigh 99 pounds and you eat a pound of nachos, are you 1% nachos? So they're learning their percentages, you know? So just, just a good, good way to go. We are, of course, in the middle of state testing and I'm really grateful to Mr. Combs and Ms. Bluesman and all the eighth grade teachers for working on how we could use the laptops and, and the third grade teachers for being the guinea pigs and starting it this year and all of the collecting of, of figuring out how to do the kids at home and the collecting of devices so we could go get it done. And overall, Mr. Combs is not unhappy. So that's very good for this. We're, we're not stressed. We're getting, we're not. We're getting, we're not so stressed and we're getting through it. And just grateful to everybody for that. We did have our fairy tale forum on March 26th, Friday afternoon. Well-attended, both the faculty and parents, faculty, staff and parents. And we were not, the recording didn't hold. I was on a different device and I think that my device didn't, I had record on, but somehow it didn't download. So I apologize for that because it was a very good presentation. And the teachers and parents that have talked to me about it were very pleased and felt like it really supported their understanding or improved their understanding of the work we do with all the great students. And special announcement, I talked to David, or Daniel, can I say it's Daniel? It's not David. I'm sorry. I talked to Daniel today and he has agreed to come back to work with faculty on May 14th, just to do some reflective strengthening, rejuvenating work with them towards the end of the year. So we're really pleased about that. Another issue we have been working on diligently is mental health and wellness. Information from VCOE, talks a lot, UCL Education, talks a lot about increased suicidation. Kids who are contemplating, thinking about suicide. And that's significant throughout the middle school and high school populations especially. But even in the lower grades, it's coming out. And of course, we saw this start with the campfire system. We haven't really lost it in Beatty County yet. So, so giving some extra attention to that. Beatty County has a team of about four experts, counselors, child development experts and so on that are working together to bring this message to schools. They have on the 22nd for high school students, they have a program that they're doing that they really wanted to keep it focused on high school. So they've come to us, talked to us, talked to parents, and they'll be back in the classroom after testing in May to talk to sixth, seventh and eighth graders. We also want those young ones to know that if it's too tough a conversation that we have with a group that they of course can opt out of it. It's, it's not something that requires, but it is really good information about just how to, you know, how to acknowledge what's going on, how to get help and how to help your friends and your friends and children and your friends. So we also are working on a website. We got the first, the the review of it this week, so it should go out soon. And thanks to Alex and Emma. And we've made the decision to, to update the first additional website page to be the counseling and crisis page. So that there's information on there about both for children and for adults about services that are available in the community. There's a, a, you know, things like breathe and, you know, also you should go onto it when you see it. There's, Emma's put a lot into just this kind of strength and exercise and things and, and information.
We can send that out to parents too, like the announcement and have the website and these are.
Yes, we'll, we'll put it out on, oh, there she is. We'll put it out on parents' course and refer them back to, to this. And then I will be inviting Emma to come speak here next month so she can talk about everything.
I tried to put the announcements of what new pages we have up on Acorn and Facebook, in Acorn and on Facebook. And then we also updated our homepage too, using the, I can't remember if we mentioned this already, but using what we learned from MC2 Design, they kind of gave me a template to go off of. And I tried to make it as bluey as possible. And I was thinking of this Laurel when you were mentioning the, asking how you know about us? Because we have this really helpful form at the bottom to schedule a tour and get started. So this would be a great place to put that. It's right there and easy to find.
I don't think I realized at the time, but I did not just navigate this website and it is much better. Like it's more user-friendly. Like I tried to go on and find the agenda. I just didn't realize at the time, I think, stuff that was moved around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great. That's wonderful.
Better get that out there.
Yeah.
And I really appreciate that school calendar is really.
Yeah.
Actually, that I search for more than anything else for all of my kids' schools. And it doesn't matter that I have printed them several times. I still have someone pulling that up.
One of the agendas too, because you have to go on to all the meetings that way. So being, I did, like I said, I didn't notice it, but I did click on it right in the front and I was like, hmm.
Yeah. Very good.
That was different. Yeah, so it's, it's nice. It's definitely more user-friendly.
So yes, Alex talks about going down her webpage rabbit.
I just emerged from four hours and working on the website.
And then it's very important, it's coming soon. We talked about the web, web. Thank you. It's not a webinar, it's a meeting. And then graduation, so this will be a change on the calendar. Graduation, we sat down with the eighth grade teachers about what we're going to do this year. We are going to do the eighth, on an in-person graduation. And we booked the cards and turned them to Rose's. We will have two separate ceremonies so that we have enough space for each of the groups of students. And so that will be on Friday the 4th, starting in the afternoon, two separate ceremonies. That's where we go. We're looking and considering continuing on the Friday afternoon because one of the things that's come up this year is that the, four years ago, the eighth grade class is graduating high school, the two eighth grade teachers this year were also the eighth grade teachers of the two classes that are graduating. So I couldn't go to book their children, their own Blue Oak graduation, they're in grade M, high school graduation of the children that they were a part of their lives.
Their kids and their classmates.
And their classmates. So it just brought up the whole discussion and so we'll move forward to see if this is a working solution.
One, I think too, because a high school graduate, a high school student graduating and it's sibling in eighth grade, which is not uncommon, have a four-year. Graduation starts to get tricky. It's sort of like, who?
So that's my report.
Susan, there, Susan, there was a time that for a while we were honoring Blue Oak graduates with gifting them something that they could wear on their graduation outfit. That fell by the wayside just because of lack of support. But gosh, I'd love to just kind of throw that idea out there for interested parties because it's always awesome to honor our graduates graduating high school.
It is actually a cool idea, Monica. I've heard that before. We think, they have like, well, I think they have like, maybe like handmade.
My first starter, it was like they finger knitted.
Yeah, rope, yeah.
Rope.
Get to work, Brianna. You've got some finger knitting to do.
But I'm like, like what you said, like an oak weave, maybe we can do like the talpens. I mean, except that maybe they ordered a ball pit. They're fairly.
It's a lovely job for a sewing-inclined community individual.
Right, because the other ones were finger knitted with rainbow.
Yarn?
Yarn. And they were, they had little acorn bells at the bottom.
Like a little blue silk stole with like the logo embroidered on it. Get those kindergarten's finger knitting.
It's like, the board isn't going to decide this for you, Brianna. Now are they going to do the finger knitting for you?
We sit on finger knit at the next board meeting.
Yeah, we can start at board meetings and do finger knitting.
I do know how to do that now.
What's Valerie Mello's grandma doing these days? She probably wants to take on a giant sewing project for me again.
Could be. All right. That's my report. Any questions?
I shouldn't say how grateful I am that the extent of focus on the mental health and wellness. Because in addition to the increased thoughts of suicides, there's also been a marked increase in Beatty County for domestic violence and child abuse. So just having these resources available, both for students and their families, I think is huge on so many levels. Because there's, there's a lot of, a lot of stressors right now. And so I'm, I'm really appreciative of how, how much thought and effort is going into that for.
Yeah, I appreciate that too. Also just for the kids that are, for their friends as well. Because I've had to have a few conversations with my sixth grader that were hard to navigate. That having a professional in there, having those conversations and helping her, she has friends. And even if it's not her directly, having those tools is huge. So I, I appreciate that as well.
Yeah, it's, the friends, you know, in my time here, I've gone through similar situations with these issues. And it is generally the friends that bring it.
Okay.
And so, so then it's also, I know it's also the friends' parents that are helping to support the system as well. And so, and wanting to make sure those resources are out there. The child themselves that's struggling may not be the one to, to reach out and look at the website. But if the rest of us are and know what's there.
Yeah, well, and they're more likely to possibly appear to at that age.
Sure they are.
Yeah. Giving them the tools, it's, so they can feel empowered to help.
Yeah. That's the work. All right. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Okay, well, we do need to move into closed session now. So we will, after our closed session, we will report out on what happened in the closed session, whether actions were taken or not. So Alex, take us away.
All right.
That's literally. Take us away.
Yeah, Susan, are you in?
It says I'm joining.
I guess you guys are already in the room together, so she doesn't need to be on her own screen. So Susan, please tell us about the real estate update.
I am, no, I don't know that I am in. Am I in? Yeah, I'm saying I'm joining. I just don't want to say anything that anybody else. You see me now. Okay.
Oh, I see your, oh, it's showing your cameras off. That's why we can't.
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
Okay. There we are.
There we are.
We just want to make sure we're all in the closed session room and not.
There she comes. There she is. All right. Take it away, Susan.
It's like where all the people were supposed to be. So I had hoped to have a little more update for you today, but I can share where we are. There are two parcels at that facility. The owner of the parcel is having issues with the amount of debt that's on the property. So selling it for the price that we want causes some significant issues. So he's dealing with his accountants and figuring out what we can do. So Charity at this point has talked about a couple of different options. We're not ready to go and I'm not ready to have you vote on them. But just to let you know, she's talking about either needing to come up to the price, which would be 3.7 million. Where were we at? We're at 3.25. Okay. So, so of course we do have 3.6 that's available through, and I'm, it's probably slightly more than that. I haven't asked them, so what is a 3.6 to, you know, whatever. We do have that available in the measure K, which we can put forward for that. Or the other option she's talking about is separate, only purchasing the building and the property that goes on that parcel, which includes the batting cages and some of that, but not the whole. So those are the options that she's talking about right now. We're not.
But not the what? Not the what part? Does it not include?
Not the mini golf.
Oh, that whole.
That would be as expensive, we wouldn't pay less.
Right.
But we wouldn't have the full thing. So that's, that's where she is with it. She's not really ready to quite come to the board with that proposal, but those are the things that are, are being discussed right now. So that's my update. Any discussion or questions?
What would, so if we just bought the one parcel and built a school there, there would be this old funky. Golf course mixture?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would then get run down with the, because it wouldn't be a particularly desirable parcel. So can I assume that one's good thing?
And then one question of those like, okay, so if we can't buy it now, then can we buy it?
Yeah, well, and then it's kind of like, can they help us at that point if we're already completed that part of the transaction? Because they still.
That's a wire. If we do that and then, yeah, can we?
But if there's another bond issue?
Well, which is expensive.
Yeah.
I told you, I'm going to tell you that story.
Yeah. Yeah. I would be interested, I guess my question would be like, what is the size of that parcel? So like, because the potential is there, but if we didn't purchase that piece right away, it could get snatched up. The hotel could decide to snatch it up to expand that.
I mean, could ask, as we purchase, we could ask for this right. On.
Yes.
Part of our purchase.
Correct, correct. But I would, I would be curious to know what the size of that is, that would be if we're going like, you know, out of the brand, you know, out of the larger portion. I assume that it's, that it's the mini golf, the building that accompanies the mini golf and that first segment of parking. Because there's actually three entrances to the parking lot. One of them, the entrance was straight to the mini golf.
I know, I didn't realize until later. Yeah.
So it is a pretty good sized chunk. So I would want to, I guess, maybe see an aerial. Yeah, because that's where we had talked about like potentially being a portion of the play area or outdoor space. And so just knowing, knowing the, the size impact of that versus, you know, potentially having to come up and will we pay? Or, you know, so yeah, I'd like to see an aerial. I mean, or for sure I could just do it.
The impression I, I kind of got is from the last meeting, because I, I feel like I was catching up a lot on this, is that we don't have a ton of options. And so if we're kind of starting with that, that other parcel, I would be surprised if somebody else snatched it up because it's in that awkward area. I would make my decision just based off not getting that one.
Correct.
That would just, that's just my two cents because you're not losing that much. And I just, if it's going to foreclose or he's going to be in trouble anyways and there might be an option later, I would be surprised somebody else would be going.
Yeah, I think it would only be the hotel.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't expect that either, but it's just kind of from the get-go, we're redoing a site, if that then means.
We're losing the space, yeah.
Correct. And what, because I know what she had, like the ideas that had been thrown around in the last meeting was that that would be like our outdoor space.
Right.
A portion, our outdoor space would be that space. So then.
But Buck said he could move it.
Well, right. And that, but that's what I want to, kind of look at then, what, what then would the option offer? Because you're, I agree with you. Like I, I don't think it's a matter of, do we go for it or not go for it? It's a matter of do we potentially come up in price or do we go down in property size? You know, for me to be able to make that decision, if we, how much do we lose? And is it worth it to wait?
Yeah.
And say, okay, well, for the first year or even a couple of years, we, we don't really have green space and kind of what that looks like and how that feels for us. So that would be my thought is.
I'm thinking, I have a, I have a question. You know, it's, it's always been kind of a curiosity to me how, from my perspective, you know, just driving into Chico, it looks like Blue Oak is way overbuilt on parking. But then when you have a lot of, you know, when you have an event, it, the parking doesn't look excessive. So I'm just wondering if, you know, just, this is kind of the dream, you know, and factoring it in. If you could look at, say, solar in the parking lot. And I, I mean, I wonder if, this is off the wall, but you know, being able to use that parking space, making sure you have adequate parking space, but then maybe like a sandbox on wheels. making sure you have adequate parking space, but then maybe like a sandbox on wheels, the wheels out into it, and then, you know, and is under solar shade? And you know what I mean by the, the energy generating? Anyway, I'm just thinking, i- i- if we could maybe think about more effective use of the space too. I don't know if any of that made sense, but there you go.
That does work. And as you were talking, I was thinking, well, like, if a portion of the parking lot was the playground blacktop that from a day-to-day perspective was closed off, but then for big events, then that area could be open, because you wouldn't have kids playing basketball during the concert, so then you could open up for parking. But I think.
Well. Even things like wheeled planters, you know, like, they have adequate brakes on them, you know, you know how you can.
Yeah.
They, they hit, you have those wheels, you step on a thing and it locks it, but that would kind of add to the greenery and, um, you know, even potentially be gardening areas for kids to get away from that strictly blacktop look. But anyway, just, I, I was thinking, like, in the master plan, planning that space both to be multipurposed and then also, um, i- kind of a progressive development of it. Thank you.
Thanks Laurel. So I agree with Amber, I don't think anyone's going to buy that funky little strip if we dominate the, the scene. But, um, before she mentioned that my, I had the opposite concern, which was just, is, we don't have control over who gets that, that parcel. So, um, but I agree with Amber, it's probably unlikely. But my overarching thought is, um, we've, we, so many opportunities have come and gone throughout the year that I don't want to lose this opportunity. I, it's not my favorite, I totally agree with all of the concerns, but I think if we're going to do it, we might as well do it and do it right. And I want to point out that it's not just about having a playground for the kids, that green space is critical for Waldorf education. We need a garden, we need a field, and that has been one of the overarching, grass. Is like, anytime you survey the parents, like, we need grass, you know? So like, to me, I would want to, I would want to figure out how we. Um, but I would want to figure out how to get an air, enough of the area where at least have a places where the kids could play in, in dirt, because that's, you know, we've lived without dirt for the last however many years we've been at this particular site. And I think we need to get back to the, back to the garden, seriously.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got garden spaces now, but that to me, like Chelsea said, I want to see what it entails, this or that, or what we hold off, or what we whatever, but I really want to not give up the field, you know?
Yeah. Right, and, and the reality is, like, if we can procure it during the initial build-out, then, you know, your, your cost is less when you're removing twice the blacktop than it is if you remove half the blacktop and then later remove the other half, kind of thing.
Agreed, yeah.
Overall cost is less to do it all in one swoop, um, if we can find that balance between the price and the property size. Um, obviously, if you have to overpay for it, and not eat that up. Um, but yeah, like, that's exactly what's worked out, Monica, it's just, how much do we have to give up? Because we're not giving up building, we're giving up green space, or playground space, or outdoor space, and how could we mitigate that, where could we make those adjustments? Because if it is potentially a couple of years, especially if, if it's a financial issue, and then they have to go through the whole process of, um, if the bank is going to foreclose on it, and, and it goes down that route, um, that, that's not always a fast process.
Sure.
So it could be a while, and what, um, what then do we live with in the meantime? And ensuring that it is still adequate, um, because, you know, as we, our, our best opportunity for marketing a new space is going to be when it's brand new.
Yeah.
And so, to have it be its most appealing right away, I think adds so much value also. Um, so that.
You raised, Chelsea, that's a, sorry, that's a really good point. I think too, can, is, is soil somewhat toxic after you remove blacktop?
Um, I don't, I don't believe it's toxic, but I know it's fairly depleted of any nutrients. So there would certainly may have to add soil back. Um, but yeah, I think about the funding. Yes.
Just so.
Sorry. Um, so, does this, if we pay more, does that be out of our, um, uh, entire budget to rehab the property? Or is this separate? It does, okay. So that makes a difference, right?
So it would be, if I were looking at, about five hundred thousand more than we previously.
Had we.
So we'd have to come up with a hundred five hundred thousand to do it. Or, or finance that, yeah.
Oh, okay, because they've already budgeted out how it's going to cost to design everything, we're already, okay.
So, um, yeah, so it would, it, it would increase our overall budget just to come up to what, um, they want. But whether or not the budget is affordable, I, we haven't gotten into that discussion.
But I would ask like, oh, yeah.
That's going to cost us next year two thousand a month, and we afford that, that discussion.
Or we'll have to give something up.
Yeah. So we'll have to give something.
Okay, yeah, so that smaller parcel is point nine one of an acre, and then the larger one with the skating rink is two point four two. So yeah, that's almost point nine, that's almost.
Almost a foot.
Yeah. My, my biggest concern is kind of like I said, you know, with, with that initial impression, like, when we have this bright and shiny new site, it's going to break the most attention. And if it's this bright and shiny new site with a janky rundown old golf course next to it, you can tell people you want, well, we plan to at some point buy that and so it's cleaner. Um, because it also prohibits us, you know, one of the things that kind of came up in the last meeting was talking about the hotel overlooking and, you know, potentially planting some, um, taller growing hedge-type things to add privacy. And without owning that flat, you, you have no way to, to put anything between you and the hotel for any of that. Yeah, so you would really just have a, a janky rundown mini golf course.
Yeah. Even if the golf course is to tear down.
So it must be pretty bad. Yeah.
Yeah.
Usable, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not going to be, like, we need the outdoor space more, we need the extra building.
Yeah.
For me, it would be, um, I would lean more towards figuring out how we could maybe meet somewhere between where we currently would like to be and where they are, and then also, you know, seeing if that makes, make some adjustments in the, um, proposal, like, if there are certain things. Because I know sometimes when you're working with builders, um, if you do certain, like, tear out stuff, then they bring the cost down.
Yeah, where we could pull.
Maybe something like that, like things that volunteers could do, I don't mean like stuff that requires a contractor, but, right.
It seems like we're all in the same consensus that we definitely want that other property if we can. And it's just a matter of like, what are we going to have to compromise to get it?
Right.
You know.
I would definitely.
I think, yeah, I would agree, yeah.
Hey. I was, I was going to say too, if we acquired the whole property, maybe we could roll out, um, the development in phases. And I agree with Chelsea a hundred percent that if, if we roll out other parts of, uh, phases of the development, and then we're looking at that ugly golf court, courts, course, there's going to be a lot of motivated volunteers to, that will, I think, because that's what happened in our current facility. There was a lot of volunteers who said, we need to, we need to fix this, or we need to fix that. And so we showed up in troops, plus we can make it a special capital campaign to, to do that second phase, like, tear out the ugly golf course.
Okay, I feel like I have a good sense of the direction that you want me to go, and I do appreciate it. Um, I will share also, as part of this report, that I have reached out to Lee Brothers, and they are open for another year on, or two, if you need it.
That's good.
Um, as far as the lease goes, so I.
And a substantial impact.
They haven't told me, I'm going to hold down to the, yeah, I'm going to, well, we'll see what I can do, they kind of have us in Bavaro. Um, I've also talked to.
We don't know how much of Bavaro we are.
Yeah. Um, I've also talked to, um, to Unified there, absolutely pleased with the idea of reaching them. Yay, spend it, spend it, so that's fine.
Good.
Very good, so. They don't know what the property is yet, I think they'll be more excited than, know what the property is, since it's right next to their property.
Yeah, I think one of the neat things too about that facility and talking about parking for concerts and things like that, the building across the street is very much, um, a commercial building. So really, anything that opens in there, um, well, I think it's even up by the government.
I think it's a county building.
Or county, I mean. And so really, anything that goes in there is likely to also be a daytime use only, which leaves a very giant parking lot right across the street. Um, so I think that also allows us to have a little less parking, and that whole Carmichael Road, uh, it's legal street parking as well.
Yeah, I was going to say that too. I drove over there.
I think we could even, um, increase our green space more by not needing quite so many parking spots, because, um, here, you can't.
The streets, yeah, the street parking, I think, will be huge, and there's nothing else kind of to add that in, but it's not going to really be a nuisance either.
Yeah.
Yeah, that building is growing on me.
It's growing on me too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I love.
The building's.
I love every one of all of these issues with it right off, because it's like, okay, let's get this out.
Yeah.
Talked it through.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we'll figure it out.
It's my process.
That works, it's a good process.
It is, except I grew up by, like, the school finish, before the body cage. Yeah, and my son went skating there this weekend.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah. Eighth grade, one of the eighth grade classes was running there, near your apartment.
Yeah.
But it has a lot of joy in that building.
It does.
And we're going to still in that same way. So I know, somebody said that kind of last time, and I, that resonated with me, but it definitely will be a good replacement.
Yeah, and I, I definitely think that utilizing that type of thing, and as it comes to that, and maybe even about from getting some more systems for, um, MC2 to, um, put the right estimate on it at that point. Because, you know, I've, I've mentioned just to, you know, a couple of people, hey, I heard Hell State's going to close. And not with any association with this, but like, oh, I heard they might be closing, oh, really? I hope that somebody else, you know, buys it and fixes it back up and turns it back into it, you know, I'm like, oh, I don't think that's going to happen. So also.
I've been shooting my knuckle too, Chelsea, you know, because I, it's the same thing, because I, I planned whole school events there for my job. And I was like, I was like, oh, I don't think we can do that anymore. And they're like, they said the same thing, and I'm like, oh, done.
I'm like, hey, mate.
Well, I will say this, there was one in the hometown that I grew up in, and when it closed, it closed and nothing ever opened back up in it. So it was just this very sad building.
Yeah.
For like twenty years, I don't even, I think it's still stamped there, so.
And that's what would happen.
You know, that would, exactly, that would probably be what happens, so, yeah, that would.
For those who are from Chico, we just all need to remember Fun World, you know, when we used to have a water park. And it, and it, and we all survived it. There was a butterfly, laser tag, yeah, the whole deal, and, you know, it closed and we all survived.
Plus, we're going to have great visibility right there. I really thought about that one, and we just don't have that over here. You can't even tell where a school is really here, but there, you're going to have that great visibility to promote the school too. So I think somebody else mentioned that, it's huge.
Yeah. We're all.
Yeah. Agreed, yeah.
You know, at drop off and pickup, that intersection there at Carmichael and.
Yeah.
That's going to be a heck of a mess. Do we, in the permit process, do we need to let the city or?
Yeah.
Anybody know that we're, we're going to do this to our streets?
Yes, we did, we have to have a use permit. And on that, and it's one of the things, like, we talked about whether or not the ground is toxic or anything. That's one of the things that, um, that if you pull up payment, that's one of the things that Kevin ultimately asked from, and I'm like, I said to him, I said, okay, I'm dealing with a gentleman who has built a hundred fifty schools throughout the year.
Yes.
I, and, and they know.
Yeah.
How to do that.
Yeah.
And they'll plan it well, and that's one of the things that I love about working with this organization.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, Turner Agassi, you know, the tennis player, Agassi, that's him, who started this organization. So that was, so it's, it's been around for a while, and it's done a lot of good work.
So they've got.
They, that's what I'm like, you know, I talked to.
Traffic analysis.
Yeah, I talked to them, and they're sort of like, oh, yeah, we do the da-da-da-da-da, and I'm like, okay, they, they already know the answer to my question before I ask it. So I'm feeling really, um, yes, it's going to be, yes, it's going to be traffic. Yes, we got to think about Dutch Brothers, and especially the traffic from Dutch Brothers to Blue.
Well, that's going to be the big one.
Or Blue to Dutch Brothers.
But. Yeah, I'm afraid though, um, that, that plus humidity too, I bet you guys probably would do hundreds of dollars. And they're, because they're already pretty generated nonstop, they've been worried about it on purpose, but I would say, something like that. You know, when, when our parents are spending hundreds of dollars for, yeah, they have Dutch Brothers, they're going to be very successful. Yeah, I think they'll, you know, they're going to be happy.
Anyway, yes.
Yeah, they're going to have a more lane there.
Yeah, they need, they need a Dutch Brothers, like, we're working on that in our proposal. All right. So, Joji aside, thank you very much, I feel like I know what I can go back to Charity with, the, the way the board is moving, is that they would prefer to make both and spend a little extra money and get both and be able to deliver half the whole site.
Yeah. And then, you know, get creative and figure out how to reduce expenses elsewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, my first thought is just tear the golf course out and let us replant it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we'll do great.
Yeah.
We got, I've already told Jacquet Hammer that she's not allowed to stop working in the garden if you move to new sites.
Yeah, right.
She says she wants, there's eight hundred dollars in the garden, right? But, but she wants us to hold on to, I said, I'll hold on to it as long as you have, and spend it for us in new sites. So, you know, that's, and of course you have, so who knows a few things about her. So, I think, you know, I, I think that, okay.
Okay, I just want to acknowledge, it's, um, being on Zoom while you guys are all in person, it's kind of hard to hear the details and the minutia of your conversation. So I'm sorry if I interrupted or interjected at the wrong time or anything, it's, it's kind of hard to tell the flow, so. Um, thanks you guys, that actually was a great conversation that we all had, and we're ready to leave the room. Everybody in agreement?
And Monica, I want to ditto your, uh, comment to the group, I apologize, I know I've interrupted a few times, but I have to be on my phone tonight, my internet quit, and it's been a little bit complicated, so apologies, and thank you all.
Thanks for being here, Laurel.
Yeah, we're glad you could make it. Yeah, and I still, I still think even, even all of that aside, I still feel like it's flowing a lot more smoothly than all of us being on Zoom where nobody can tell when they're supposed to jump in. So I think, I think it's flowing very good, and so I'm glad you could.
Yeah, it's a step in the right direction, yeah. Awesome, great guys, thank you. Well, I'm going to leave the room, are we going to, everybody leave?
Oh, yeah.
You guys.
I did.
And I figured, did I get over?
No, no.
I'm two.
Now I'm the only one.
I'm about to rejoin the meeting.
Okay. Where are we, Alex? Where are you supposed to?
I'm sort of like done myself. Okay.
I see Chelsea's back, and.
We all left a meeting.
Monica, Laura.
I actually left the meeting on that one, I thought it would slip out the back, me too. Accidentally left the whole thing.
Actually, all left the meeting, except for Alex, she was the only person that didn't leave the meeting.
We all just evaporated.
Alex has left the room twice, and it doesn't seem to be letting me go.
Well, let me come back in. And Alex, in the main, in the main meeting room, it still says the host has opened breakout rooms, please wait to be assigned. So I don't know if you can close down the breakout.
Oh, let me see.
And kick everybody out.
Close all rooms, there we go.
Because I was just, I was like, if you cancel the breakout rooms, it should force us all back.
Yeah.
There we go. There's Amber. Yeah.
There's Amber, Laurel, and Vicky. So the only thing we have left is to report out that we took no action during the closed session, um, and then to adjourn this meeting, and I want to let you guys know, I'm not going to be, at my other meeting that I have, my big annual meeting is also on May eighteenth at six P M, that my boss, actually, it's scheduled for like five P M. So there's a chance I can come to this, to the charter council meeting after that. Um, but I will have to be on Zoom because that other one's Zoom, and I just wanted to let you guys know. So Vicky, you're going to run the next meeting, at least until I can get there.
Okay.
These guys are fast, and it'll be done by the time I get done with my other meeting, just kidding.
I just want to add, there's a chance that I also won't be able to make it to that meeting, and I should know pretty soon. It's during finals weekend, there are some weird schedules.
It's during finals weekend, there are some weird scheduling things happening in the evening, so I'll let you know as soon as I can.
Great, thanks Laurel.
Yeah, yes, Laura, make sure you let us know as soon as you can, since it's a pretty important meeting and we may have to reschedule it.
I should know in the next week.
Perfect, yeah, thank you. Okay, guys, anything else we need to do for tonight? So the next scheduled meeting is May eighteenth at six P M. If Laura can't make it, I, we may reschedule it, even if we scheduled it later, I could make it that same night, but I just, you know, so my other thing's at five. Okay, all right, thank you so much for being here tonight, everybody. Thanks for all the good work. I want to mention, I, I did, I, I got to sit in on a, on a guest speaker at my high school where I work, and it was a man talking about women in leadership. And one of the high school students like, yeah, well, what's the difference if men are there, women, isn't it just the same? And I was like, actually, no, I sit on a board that's all women and we're collaborative instead of competitive. I just wanted to tell you all you that, what a pleasure it is to be in the room and to work with all you guys, because it's a palpably different environment, and I really appreciate being with other women in leadership, so thank you, all of you for being here.
I think that is well said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
All right. Have a great evening, everybody, and thanks again.
Thank you, bye.
Bye.